I'm Jeanne Casella from Solitary Watch and I'm honored to be your moderator tonight. I want to begin by thanking our host Senator Bill Perkins who made it possible for us all to be together tonight. I want to thank the advocacy groups who came together to organize this event and most of all I want to thank all of you for coming out to share your concerns and share your stories. That's going to be a very important part of this evening. I think all, most of us are gathered here tonight because we believe that there's a major human rights crisis going on in terms of the way we treat our prisoners. It's not going on in Guantanamo or in some distant overseas black site. It's going on here in our own backyards in our state and in our city. Right now as we're sitting here, there are 1,000 people on Rikers Island who are in solitary confinement. They include children under the age of 18. They include a large number of people with mental illness and this is happening about four miles away from where we're sitting tonight. They're living in conditions that have been denounced widely by international bodies as cruel, inhuman, and degrading punishment and as torture. A little bit further away in upstate New York, there are additional 4,500 men, women, and children who are in some form of extreme isolation. Just going to wait while these people sit down. So there are 4,500 people in New York State living in extreme isolation in small concrete boxes. Some of them are there for weeks, some are there for months, some for years, and a few for decades. Until recently, these were, these people were pretty much invisible to everyone except the loved ones who stood by them and a small group of advocates and grassroots activists who cared about their plight. Fortunately, that's changing now. They're becoming less invisible, coming, this issue is coming out of the shadows and into the light of day. And we're very fortunate on that front this week to have a new report put out by the New York Civil Liberties Union. It's called "Boxed In: The True Cost of Solitary Confinement in New York's Prisons." And please don't leave tonight without a copy if you didn't have one on your chair. There are other copies over here and there is other literature on solitary confinement to pick up on this table to my left. The report found that about half of the 4,500 people who were in solitary in New York are alone in cells that measure about six by 10, that's about the size of an elevator, and the other half are locked down 23 hours a day in a cell with one other person and those cells are approximately the size of the parking space. They're let out about one hour a day in a fenced run, that's basically a human kennel. In New York, more than 80% of the prisoners who are sent to the box are sent there for nonviolent misbehavior solely on the say-so of corrections officers. Offenses include failing to immediately obey an order, something that's called reckless eyeballing, which basically means looking at somebody the wrong way. People are locked up for testing positive for marijuana use instead of being sent to substance abuse treatment. And there are even people who've been sent to solitary for having too many postage stamps, which are considered a form of prison contraband. Now, I know that for some of you in this room, none of this is news because you have experienced these conditions yourselves personally, either firsthand or through the stories of loved ones. And we're very, very anxious to hear from all of you tonight. I want to emphasize that what happens tonight is meant to be a town hall meeting and not a lecture. After some very brief presentations by the folks sitting up here, we've set aside more than half the time this evening to hear from all of you with your experiences, questions, comments, and your ideas about where we should go from here when it comes to dealing with this human rights crisis and all this. To begin however, we are going to turn to our very distinguished panel, which brings together elected officials, advocates, and people who've been directed, directly affected by solitary confinement in New York. And we'll start with Senator Bill Perkins, who represents the 30th Senatorial District of New York, followed by Assemblyman Keith LT Wright, representing the 70th Assembly District.
Thank you very much. We've asked you to sign a petition. The petition essentially is a letter to the governor requesting leadership on his part with regard to, it's an action-oriented thing to get him to get engaged and to do something about this. And I have a childhood friend amongst us today who I've asked to join us to take five minutes to share with you his experience as a former inmate incarcerated for a quarter of a century and subjected to solitary confinement several times. So I want to ask Orlando Boyd, who is a childhood friend, to please come forward and share with us your personal experience.
My name is Orlando Boyd. I did about 26 years in several different facilities and I got in a couple of scuffles with a couple of people. What happened was they sent me to solitary confinement. And solitary confinement, a lot of people don't know or realize that it's crazy, it's abnormal, and it's inhumane. Sometimes in the wintertime, what they would do to us would open the windows and it'd be cold and they only gave us a little sheet, a bedspread. Sometimes the officers was good, sometimes some officers were just out of their minds. Sometimes if you didn't wake up, you'd miss your meal and then you had to wait for, how you say, your noon meal or your evening meals, you know? And like, sometimes if we wanted to step out certain institutions to go to the yard just to talk to some people, keep us from going crazy, we had to go out in the cold, but we had to do this, you know, just to have some contact with people, you know? But what I used to do is pray all the time and say, listen, I got myself into this and I'm gonna get myself out of this. But what I used to do to stay from getting cold, I would jump in jacks, push-ups, sit-ups. I think about my mother, I keep praying to think about my daughter, or the good times or the loved ones to keep me from going crazy. Now I'm out, I've been out over a couple of years, but still sometimes I have nightmares. But I guess it's because I did all that time and I thought it would be, you know, an easy adjustment, but it wasn't. I still sometimes think about prison, but I'm doing well now. But what I realized is that I have to stay around positive people, you know, instead of being around all that negativity, you know? But I'm not going to be bitter, I'm not going to be angry about what happened to me, you know? I know what I did and I paid for it. But I just think that what they're doing to people up there in some of them boxes, we call it segregation, we call it the hole, what they're doing is crazy. They beat you down sometimes. They'd be so angry, they'd just punch us. And sometimes we try to reach out to y'all or some of the loved ones or some of the people that care to try to come into the institutions and find out what's going on because it's not normal. You know, animals don't want to be locked up, so we're human. We don't want to be locked up, but not in no box. And it's just wild. It's crazy. So I just want to share this with y'all so maybe sometimes like, somebody can go up there or somebody can stop this, what's going on. Because some of the police up there, they're crazy, but not all of them are bad, some of them are good. Because I tell you one experience I had, I almost caught another charge while I was in there because something happened. Like I said, it's no cakewalk in prison. And this guy did something to another guy and I happened to be in the area, but an officer saved my butt. He said, listen, Mr. Boyd, I know who you are, come on out of there. Other than that, what would have happened was they had to charge me on a new charge because I would have kept my mouth shut because that's the way it is in prison. You gotta mind your business and you gotta keep your mouth shut and you gotta stay on your toes. Like I said, it's no cakewalkers, no walk through the park. And everybody's being tested, the convicts, okay, the police, everybody. I don't want to talk too long because I guess somebody else might want to come up here, you know? I don't want to take up too much time, you know? But I think somebody needs to do something about that because it's very, very wild. It's very crazy and I've been hearing that. A lot of guys just don't want to come up and talk about this, but I said, listen, I gotta share this. I gotta reach out to some of them guys I left behind because I met some good people and a lot of them people, they helped me get out. So I'm just asking y'all, if you can do something, please, please do something about it. Thank you.
So as I indicated, we are oriented towards trying to take some action in terms of petition to end solitary confinement in New York. It's a petition to our Governor Cuomo. I'll read it real quickly and then if you haven't signed it, please make sure you do if you feel like you can be supportive. We, the undersigned, urge you to exercise your authority to issue an executive order to end the inhumane and torturous practice of solitary confinement. It is imperative that the state of New York's usage of solitary confinement be stopped and you have both the authority and the duty to do so. The state's prison system puts roughly 4,500 inmates into solitary confinement each year, around 2,000 of which are released directly into society every year without receiving educational, vocational, rehabilitative, or transitional program. Thus, once they are released from prison back into society, they are woefully less prepared for reintegration compared to those inmates who have received such rehabilitative services. This, of course, greatly increases the race of, the rate of recidivism and continues the vicious cycle of criminality. Evidence of the deleterious effects from solitary confinement has been well documented over the years and has long been identified as cruel and inhuman treatment. Specifically, the deprivation of human contact and outside stimulation is commonly used as torture throughout other parts of the world. New York has no right to torture, nor should it. The barbaric practice of solitary confinement does very little to prepare convicts for reintegration into society and to a life outside of the prison walls. But it certainly wreaks havoc on their mental state and greatly threatens their mental stability, a volatile combination indeed. We implore you to end the cruel and inhumane practice of solitary confinement. Prisoners are entitled to human rights and their incarceration status in no way makes them less human or less deserving. So please, if you're so inclined, we urge you to make sure you join us in appealing to the governor to exercise his authority to provide some humanity in our prison system. Thank you.
I think we're going to move on to our advocates now. And in the interest of time, we're going to have them introduce themselves.
How's everybody doing? My name is Dulcio Acosta. And today I was asked to come speak in front of you to represent my half, Mental Health Alternatives to Solitary Confinement. To put my experiences in a five-minute time span would be, you know, I would be incredible if I could do that, until I can. So what I want to do is actually tell you a little bit about my, a part of my journey. And the reason why this part of my journey I picked particularly to share with y'all today is because it highlights the treatment of individuals with mental health conditions in solitary confinement, right? Now, I don't want to misguide anybody and I don't want to sell myself as being either victim or, you know, the innocent guy. While I was incarcerated, I did commit certain infractions and the security, you know, deemed that I needed to be segregated from the rest of the population, right? One of those infractions was while I was at Greenhaven Correctional Facility, I actually, I got caught with a cellphone. They was charging my wife $900 a month and I was desperate and I actually wanted to talk to my family. And during that period of desperation, an opportunity, a window presented itself for me to acquire a cellphone, right? So I got three years, actually when they told me about it, they told me I got 1,085 days because of that cellphone, right? So I'm not going to say how I got the cellphone, that's why I got the three years. So now, thus, I go to Southport. When I go to Southport, I'm pretty personable, the officer, when I made it to level three because there's levels, there's stages, right? So getting into Southport, this wasn't my first time in Southport, actually every time I went into solitary confinement, I spent, let me just touch on this, I spent approximately nine years in some form of segregation or another throughout my state in, you know, in the prison system. During that three-year span in Southport, I actually got to witness things that, that was like my last thing in the, in the box, right? And during, the reason why it's important and I want to share this part of my journey was because this was when the awakening actually started to happen to me, right? When I started to realize that there was a purpose, like bigger purpose for me, I no longer wanted to be in jail, like I felt like, you know, this isn't not Kansas anymore. I want to go home, you know, the game is over. But however, I was still in jail, right? So while I was there, I like, the, I started, things started like mattering to me, things started becoming like more important, right? It became bigger than myself and I started seeing that for some reason, although I know that solitary confinement had some sort of effect on me now, even today, I actually experienced certain things and the other day I was commenting on the interview with Anthony Graves and when he was relating the like, the psychological effects that solitary confinement had on, on him, I was like, oh my God, somebody's like putting into words these feelings that I never knew how to express. I started saying like, oh, I'm not alone, like something, you know? I, I was affected by solitary confinement. How I coped and how I made it through is, you know, is a wonder to me. However, I didn't have a strong support system. I had my family, I became, you know, I sort of adopted like a autodictatic style of learning and, you know, I courageously started, you know, like devouring these tombs of books, right? And I started reading and, you know, all these psychological books on why, you know, what was the reason why I'm here, what was the reason why individuals are here, like what sort of affects us, you know, long-term solitary confinement has on individuals? And I really didn't find, in all these other people's opinions, I really didn't find like an answer. There was like really no proof or no conclusive evidence that solitary confinement served any kind of purpose other than to place some individuals under emotional duress and damage them. However, you know, this was the system, you know, and I found myself there. While I was there, I actually went to V3 and it's like, that's like a level three category within Southport and I became a porter. While I was, while I was a porter in that company, so in Southport, let me remind you, there's 21 cells and they let you out, so it's like, so you becoming a porter is like you're the man, right? Because you, you come out from like, like she said earlier, I think it's a six by 10 cell, you come out into a little hallway that's approximately 30 feet by 4 feet. You're the man, you out, right? Not only that, but one of the benefits of being a porter is that you actually have an opportunity to interact with other individuals, right? So, you know, I used to lie to myself and say that the reason that I came out and the reason that I spent so much time talking to everybody was because they needed me to talk to them. I never admitted it, it was, I needed to talk to somebody, right? So besides talking to them in letters with my family and asking them to bring me books and me reading and keeping on, I started to actually, you know, interact with the individuals that was in there and no longer see them because sometimes, you know, you, you, I think it's human nature that we use generalizations whenever we think about somebody that's like a convicted criminal. Even individuals that's in the system still, you know, have these assumptions about individuals that are in there, like these guys are criminals, even though you're in there yourself, like not me, but these guys, you know, the little mirror that they give you, there's a piece of polished steel, when you look at it, you say, you know, like, I'm not like them, you know, I'm me, these guys, you know, they're dangerous. But as I started to see the way that the corrections department actually utilized punitive measures to answer cries for help. So Southport is real known for individuals playing with, you know, and it sounds so degrading now, but with feces, right? So you have individuals that actually either throw it on other people or bathe in it, right? And the way that corrections actually answered this back then was by, you know, actually having fun. I was regaling somebody earlier with an account with something that they call the Superman. So whenever somebody would either do something, either stay with a tray top, so they give you these trays, they feed you in your cell, and if you stay like with the tray top, the officers have an excuse to go in your cell and extract you, right? Now, you would imagine that somebody having a tray top, maybe they could break it, use it as a weapon, they could either cause, you know, hurt themselves or whatever, but it was the response of the officers to the individual staying with the tray top. They was like, they was having fun, right? Because you gotta remember, Southport, the majority of individuals are all, you know, in solitary confinement. So they really don't have a chance to use like the riot gear, their like shields with electricity and all that. So whenever somebody like acted up or somebody committed some sort of infraction, they would go to them and like, actually be eager, like you're sure you're not going to give it back? Are you sure you're not going to give it back? And they would like go run and tell Bob and Bob would tell Billy and Billy would tell Thornton and all these other individuals and then they would run back suited up to the max with these shields and do a major extraction like the individual, I don't know what he did in his cell other than stay with his cell, you know, with his little top, right? So what we call the Superman is that they would chain him up through his waist, chain up his arms, chain up his wrists, chain up his legs, and the officers, four officers would each grab a hold of a chain and then they were flying down the company. That was the Superman, right? And, and the weird stuff about it is that even as I tell y'all this, if I think back to it, to me, it seemed like a completely normal process back then. That's what's weird, right? And now I see it as that how this, this had this effect on me, right? And how other individuals like, so it gives, it gives, one of the reasons why I think I retained my sanity to a point was because I was able to read, right? And thank God for that, right? And another thing was the family support and everything else that comes along with that, feeling like you belong, feeling like you had another purpose and being able to interact with other individuals. And, and this is where my actual, to be honest with you, my actually, my little, my little experience and my, 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 my want to become a counselor and help other individuals actually started to take seat, right? So when I came out and I, and I right away got into the reentry field, that's after I was discriminated against for having a felony, but that's another story, that's for another time, more, right? So, and, and so I was helping individuals in their transition period and I still didn't realize the devastating effects that being incarcerated for that long, being in solitary confinement had on me. But as I seen other individuals making the transition, I used to see them and I used to wonder like, oh, you know, like, yeah, I know it's hard, but I never really understood why my, my situation was different from theirs, right? Family support is really, really important. Having individuals that care for you, having individuals that reach out to you, knowing that somebody cares, books, you know, they make the, a world of a difference, you know? Why people was on the internet and in Netflix and everything else like that, you know, I had my movies. I, I used to actually read five books at the same time, so that was like how I changed the channel, right? So I went from a cowboy novel that got a little boring, so I went five-five, you know? And then, you know, on Saturday I saved like the movie, if I was like feeling romantic, I did a Dino Steel, you know, this is the thing, this is, actually I utilized these things to like cope and that's how I made it through it. But we're talking about solitary confinement and I, and every day I experience and I learn more of what kind of effect solitary confinement had on me. And we're not just talking about prison, prison overall has some sort, you know, some sort of psychological effect on me. But putting individuals in these conditions and then treating them like they less than and releasing them right back in our, into our communities and expecting them to perform and conform to the norms of society is ridiculous, right? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Kerr. I'm an attorney at the Prison Rights Project of the Legal Aid Society and I've been working on this issue since, the issue of mentally ill people in, housed in solitary confinement in the state prison since 1999. That was the year that a different group, not my group, got defunded by the governor of Longmont Attica and we took a case where they had settled the issue of mentally ill getting treated in the SHU at Attica Correctional Facility. So I started out monitoring a settlement that I hadn't worked out in a facility I'd never been to and doing it pretty much on my own, although I also had Dr. Stuart Grassian as our, our expert in that case. So that's where I started. Out of that work, it became really clear that the problem was not just at Attica and that what was happening at Attica, even if we were going to get improvements there, wasn't going to voluntarily be spread throughout the system. So we needed to do something statewide, we needed more than meat and we needed to think about what the system needed. So one of the terrible things that happened when I started out was that there were two suicides in the Attica SHU of people who, as Dulcio said, were crying out for help. And not only were they not helped and removed, and there was a settlement in place, right? About this special housing unit, people were supposed to be being moved, they were not moved, they successfully committed suicide. Reading those reports, I started to think and look at suicides across the state and I started talking to other advocates and to people who work in the mental health advocacy community as opposed to just the lawyers who do prisoners' work. Out of that came Mental Health Alternatives to Solitary Confinement. Dulcio is a member, there are many members here today. And from the start of that organization, I think we picked the name finally in 2002, there was going to be an approach that included all of us. It wasn't just going to be lawyers litigating and trying to solve things and doing it in the courts. It was also going to be family members and educating and legislators and we took as many opportunities as we could to work on this problem in a different kind of way. I was the person who worked on litigation with other attorneys. The case that came out of these efforts was Disability Advocates Incorporated versus New York State Office of Mental Health. But we were also going to have legislation and that legislation became the SHU exclusion law. It didn't get passed in the way that we'd written it originally and we were going to lobby and educate and talk about this issue in every opportunity and forum that we could. So that was the, that was the three-pronged approach. And out of that, the litigation settled, the settlement increased treatment, residential treatment programs, both for people who were supposedly serving segregated confinement time, but also increased programs for people so that they wouldn't end up in segregated confinement. So it was trying to talk about mental health treatment, not just at the back door or the door to the special housing unit, but to talk about it at the front door to the prisons. So it increased residential mental health programs, increased treatment programs in the special housing units. Programs were created, the residential mental health unit, the transitional intermediate care program, and beds were increased in a number of abused individuals. There were also some changes to the disciplinary process, some of those had come through a different lawsuit, but there were additional changes that came out through the DAIB-OMH settlement. The legislation did end up passing, the SHU exclusion law is now law in the state of New York. It closely resembles the settlement, although it goes further than we achieved in the litigation. And it requires the people who have serious mental illness, which is defined in the statute, get removed from special housing units and put into residential mental health units where they have four hours out of cell a day. So these are successes that came out of a room like this. The power that created the change that we have achieved for people who are categorized as having serious mental illness wasn't won just by the lawyers in any sense. It was won by people doing what we're doing here today, talking about this issue, educating ourselves, thinking about what we can do to make things more humane and taking every kind of effort that we came. And, you know, it was a great experience to be part of that and it's a great thing that has come now that we're talking not just about this smaller group who we can say have a diagnosis that makes us know they're going to have problem, but now we can talk about the fact that this isn't good for anyone who's a human. And we can start thinking about what can we do to make this change, not just this narrow improvement, but to make this change more universal. So it was incredible work from a coalition of people, of remarkable people, people who were family members, people who were ex-prisoners, people who were advocates in legal sense advocates, advocates for other not-for-profit organizations that, that work for individuals with mental illness. We need to maintain the momentum and I say momentum and, you know, I've been doing this since 1999. Change is slow. That doesn't mean that it doesn't happen. Culture change is really slow. Culture change in an organization that's a military-type organization like the Departments of Corrections in this country is the slowest possible kind of culture change there is. So I say there's momentum because I've been here a long time, but that's what it takes and it's important enough that we are here tonight to talk about next steps. I think next steps is really what Jack, Jack's topic is, so I'm going to end. I think next steps is really what Jack, Jack's topic is, so I'm going to end there, but I'm really happy that you're all here, I'm delighted about the New York ACLU report that's come out and that we're expanding this conversation to think about change that can be for officers.
My name is Jack Beck, I work for the Correctional Association of New York, we are a private nonprofit group, and we have authority to come in to the prisons, actually inspect us inside the prisons and then write reports about what we observe, but most importantly, our role is to try to advocate, to try to improve conditions inside so that there can be some meaningful change. My task is to try to bring you up to date. Where are we now? And there are, there are a few positive steps and then there are a few actually negative steps and this is why we have to work to change those. Clearly, the SHU exclusion law, the DAI litigation and the advocacy around that has improved the conditions, conditions for a certain segment of people. There are now more than 180 individuals that have a serious discipline sentence that goes on maybe for many even years, but they are now receiving four hours of therapy every day. That is better than us doing history. I started working in New York on, on solitary confinement in 1981. It was a case that I came to that was about people in the box and they got nothing. And people with illnesses and regard were just isolated and left alone. We have come a long way from that and now we're ready to really make the step of going beyond the seriously mentally ill. So I'm letting that, that's a positive piece, it's not done, but we made a positive step, but we have to do much more and why. First, too many people are sent to the SHU in New York. That forty-five, forty-three hundred to forty-five hundred is actually, that's at any one time. But we have looked at data because we go into all these prisons and it's many, from twenty to even thirty percent of individuals at a single prison will have spent time in the SHU. In other words, this is affecting a lot of people, not just a few people. In New York, we've had another unfortunate trend, I was just looking at data and thank you all the work of NYCL. Just in the last five years, the number of tier-three tickets, and those are the most serious ones, those are the ones that land people in SHU for a long period of time, they as a percentage of the population has actually increased 11%. In other words, we're pushing back and saying, less time, get the mentally ill out, don't pursue that. Well, actually, the percentage of serious tickets are going up. We are sending people in for all the wrong reasons. Just their data. Only sixteen percent of the people that had a SHU sentence did something about violence. Most of those people, you know why they're going in there? They smoked dope inside prison. That's terrible, but you send them away for years for that in isolation, is that the response? We have several examples of the story we just heard. We had another person we just interviewed a few, a few months ago, three years in isolation because they had a cellphone. Does that mean that person is so dangerous to the whole world that we're actually going to have them lose what they have? So what we're doing is we are sending a lot of people in there and it's affecting a lot of numbers. And why they are there, who is there? That's another interesting question. I'm sorry, the race word has to be said. The criminal justice system over-incarcerates people of color. And within the prison system, more people of color end up in the box. The example of the most recent data, about fifty percent of the population is African-American, almost sixty percent in the box. And then when we looked at, we took a snapshot of people who have longer sentences, seventy-eight percent of those people were African-American. So the racism, which is the criminal justice system, is perpetuated as you go into discipline. Also, we're sending kids to the box. Four hundred people are less than twenty-one. Know they can't vote, they can't drink, but we're going to put them in this isolation. Four hundred. We're also sending older people too, they're sending people over fifty-five and sixty years old. And the problem is that during these last even ten years, where we've seen supposedly progression, we're actually seeing a greater percentage of the population in the SHU. It's growing, not getting smaller. Next piece, they're there too long. Remember the, the rapporteur, UN rapporteur, just came out with a report that said, you start to see harm after fifteen days, fifteen days. The median SHU sentence by itself is somewhere between three and six months. And we have, but that's actually misleading. It's far worse. And why? When they talk about that data, they're talking about a single sentence that somebody gets. But the problem is, many people inside the SHU get sentence upon sentence upon sentence. We looked at a group of people that had six months and twelve months SHU sentences, eighty percent of those people got another ticket and more SHU time. So you're really looking at a subset of the population that they keep on writing tickets and why? They're put in hell, they're treated with disrespect and therefore they don't react well with anyone. And so we have this burden of constantly writing tickets and having people spend more and more time in the SHU and why? Because they can't survive in that environment. And then finally, what is the environment about? We've heard some discussion of it, but I have one example, I do a lot about medical care and particularly about people with chronic conditions. And they have a rule, this is a state rule, this is not one doctor, a state rule, if they need to draw your blood and you're in the SHU, they don't take you out, they don't have a doctor do it. You have to slide your arm outside of the food slot to have the blood drawn. What doctor would ever do that to anyone? Even an animal would do that. But they do it in the SHU and it's the policy, it's not the policy for one, it's the policy for all. There was a client that I had who was HIV infected and he said, this is degrading, I'm not going to do it. They took him off his medication. And the bottom line of this, what it really says, it's respect for a human being versus treating them as something else and the only word to use is they treat them like animals. They put them in dog pens to recreate, they lock them up wherever they go, they give them no respect, no dignity. And then they say, why don't your behaviors improve? Well, the reason is the way they're being treated. And so we have a lot to do and I think we can do it because for thirty years I've been working on, this is among other issues, this is the best time because people are finally seeing the lack of humanity for human beings. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Ortega and I'm here representing Jack and also white from prison people with psychiatric disabilities. Most of all, I'm speaking as a mother. My son was in Rikers and he was an adolescent at sixteen, he just turned eighteen. He left Rikers a couple of months ago and he's up in Washington Comstock. And just to say that, as a mother, if I was to take one of my children and lock them in a box or a bathroom as disciplinary measure, I would be incarcerated. But yet the system sees fit to do this, right? And then it puts the hands of the parents and everyone else behind them because we have absolutely no power. Calling frantically, you know, I'm an activist a very long time, so I'm pretty resourceful and kind of having connections to be able to get through the system somewhat and still break walls. What we're doing to children is really detrimental because children who are placed in the unjust criminal justice system becoming adults that have problems that are irreversible. The damage that is done cannot be fixed. Therapy, great, but guess what? The scars are forever. My son had been put in the box, I believe it was the first week he was there, and he started to feel sick, which of course makes sense because you're on the island, it's filthy, you're an adult, you don't, you're, you're not an adult, you're a grown youth, so you need more food. They don't get out of quick food, so he was really ill and every time I visited, his skin was gray, his eyes were saggy, he was slouching, he was walking slow, not the peppy, bouncy kid I was used to. And then one of his braids came out and it was really problematic because he kept asking to see the doctor the first week. And they denied him, they kept saying, we'll get it to you, we'll get it to you, and then he cursed and was like, what the F? And for that, they threw him in the box. And the box for adolescents is an everyday occurrence that sometimes they'll even put it in the computer. They will put you in the box and it's not even registering that you're in there, they just do it. When he was put in the box, they took, he was naked, so I mean, no boxers, nothing. My son was stripped naked. He didn't have a toothbrush, he had no reading materials and I, I've heard since that they're supposed to, by law, give reading materials. They don't care about law. So he had absolutely nothing in there and was stripped of all things and his dignity was taken. And then after that, there were more incidents of him being put in, being in the box on Rikers, basically for horseplay. Now you're talking about adolescents that are really bored, they have nothing to do, so they're horseplaying and they play and that's also a reason for being put in the SHU. They get slapped in the face regularly, he was lined up with other youth and slapped, there was five of them in a row that got slapped by the captain. And then for him, refusing to go to school because, you know, this does stuff to your mind, sometimes you just don't want to go to school because stuff happens when you have that kind of movement and the CEO's so aggressive, he was put in the box for not wanting to go to school. He was on suicide watch a couple of times and my son was always one that was a self-preservist, preservist. He, he thought that he was like Prince Charming, he had it going on, he would always protect himself, that was number one. And then things started to change, he was, he had told me, Mom, you know what? I can't do this. I don't want to do this. And that was, that was the most terrifying thing for a mother to hear those words out of a kid that would never say that. He would not harm himself. So that was really scary for that to happen and then when I'm calling them and I'm telling them this, they're saying, yeah, he's probably just faking that. So needless to say, all kinds of like profanity came out of my mouth and just all kinds of things because your power's at that point. I think part of why I partake and I think that the time is also ripe, like Jack had said, is because Rikers in itself is in the city. We have access to it, we have mobility to, to build up enough people in the street, on the ground to fight this. People can visit more there because there's accessibility. All the cities, you know, all the boroughs are there, we have the, the boroughs available. And right now, I think what's happening with our youth is pretty terrifying. Just as a parent to say, we're putting children in there and they are children who, I know that there are cases where things happen and kids can be violent, but we are a nation that is violent and this is what we perpetuate. And then when the kids duplicate that, they're giving that even more inside. So that doesn't help to correct anything, that makes it worse. Like, yeah, my son is bitter, my son is bitter and I have to tell you, when he comes home, I don't know how he's going to be. I don't think that I have the tools to fix him, I don't know what can mend him. I, I've been trying to get resources from him, for him and it's very limited. I can remember my son saying, Mom, tell people to send me cards and letters because when I see my name on a piece of paper, that's me know that I'm alive. So there was points where he wasn't quite sure, was he there? Do I matter? Does anyone know who I am? And getting the letter with his name on it was very important. So he's an eighteen-year-old now, that he's going to come out any kind of way. And that's a lot of the youth and the adolescents that we're dealing with now. So I think if anything, to try to focus on that, because like I said, you know, I also have a husband who's in the back with my son, the, the damage is lasting, you know, he was also in solitary and I don't think, I think it's irreversible damage and I'm grateful that people directly affected can get together with lawyers and politicians and be able to say we're on the same plane because to fight that monster is a huge monster. So I'm hoping that more town hall meetings like this occur and that we're able to mobilize in the streets and on the ground as well because I think that's important and try to save our children because they are children who will eventually grow up into adults and how we can fix that.
I was incarcerated in federal prison until I was ordered out by the Second Circuit of New York. I was not in the SHU, but I think the problem, I'm going to extend the problem to say that we are not the problem who's incarcerated, the correctional officers are the problem. And the association of correctional officers is too strong a union and I think that one approach has to be to tackle, just like there's a handbook for us about what we can and cannot do, we have to redefine their role because they are unaccountable, especially in federal prison where nobody can come in. They are permitted to do whatever they want. So if your shirt sleeve is up, you are punished. And even if it's not the SHU, the punishment is severe. So I'm not, I, the SHU is the worst, but the whole system is a punishment. Now, with regard to what we can do, I believe we need to copy people who have been effective in the last two years, the Republicans. I think what, no, I'm not a Republican, but in the last two years, they've passed legislation in thirty-three states, which is anti-voter right, anti-women personhood, they have managed to, to come up with a methodology which we need to copy because it has worked. By writing legislation like Alec, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with Alec. Alec prepares the legislative model, they give it to the state senators and the, and the House, they pass it there and it becomes law. So now you have illegal immigration, which is in law in Arizona, you have all these laws. And I think for those of us who've been incarcerated and who've been radicalized by that experience, we need to do much more and we can do it effectively. If they can pass thirty-three, if thirty-three states can pass laws, then we can write one bill about solitary confinement as a model bill and try to have it passed in various states in addition to New York.
Right-wing dangerous legislation as far as we're concerned, but nevertheless, the idea was to have a lobbying kind of a body like Alec that would be able to cover a, a model legislation that could be used around the country in various state legislatures.
Just, just so you know, that is being done. The ACLU has a national prison project and there have been meetings about what we can do, the, the efforts of the New York ACLU come out of that, that organizing. And the idea that we can talk about model legislation, not similar, you know, in some ways, there, there are some that are similar to our SHU exclusion law that was passed in New York, but they're also talking about having other possibilities for pursuing legislation around the country. So that is being done.
My name is Jose LaSalle. Basically, the last two years of my imprisonment, I left from the box. Now, when I left from the box, it was psychologically torturing because even in my own house, I had to keep the doors open and every time I heard a loud noise, I got up because I thought it was the doors opening inside, you know, saying, the prison. Now, the thing there that I want to ask is when I came home, there was no programs out there to be able to help me to deal with this psychologically. Is there anything in place now that could help these people, you know, saying they come straight out the box and end up coming home paroled to go to and be able to deal with this and how would they be able to know that these programs exist?
Well, two comments on that. First is, I think one of the clearest examples of harm is the very one that you talked about. There is actually some good evidence out there that people who go directly from SHU, the box or isolation, to the streets have some of the highest recipient rates of, of anywhere. And what is needed is that at a minimum, there has to be a program inside to start the healing that happens rather than taking someone from the box. And I had someone that I had dealt with in litigation who had been in the box for seven or eight years. And it was a woman and she was literally given fifty, you know, forty dollars, put on a train to New York City. And they had it so restricted, they would not let her interact with anyone else while she was there and the next day, she's in, you know, she's in New York City. And not surprising, within days to weeks, she was back inside. So the problem is very real, there's data to show that those people have some of the hardest times reintegrating. Now, your question was, are there resources, resources on the outside? And unfortunately, there really isn't. There are some resources generally, but there's nothing that's geared to that because what we're doing is we're not acknowledging the problem. And so the litigation and other things that people have talked about is really looking at that reentry program because they first have to acknowledge that there's harm before you can start to deal with it.
I'm the producer of a documentary film called Hermit's House, which some of you are aware of, which looks at issues of solitary confinement and we're trying to get that out into the world to help raise public debate. And I'd like to hear from the panelists. Certainly advocacy and the legal work that's going on is critical and how do we shift public opinion on this? Like, how do we get this to be a much more publicly discussed issue and, and issue that's really making national headlines?
It's happening slowly, it's happening incrementally, but I do think it's happening. The New York Times has had several editorials on this subject, the Washington Post has had an editorial in New York, the coverage of the New York Civil Liberties Union report has been pretty tremendous. Unfortunately, the hearts and minds of people change slowly and I think it's because prisoners are the most dehumanized members of our society. And, you know, if you see a And, you know, if you see a story and, um, even the New York Times, the comments are just like heartbreaking and horrible. So many of the comments and responses from people, you know. It's a slow process. I mean, I think films like yours make a tremendous contribution.
Even the Times Union, by the way, the Albany Times Union has been doing some work, sorry, has been doing some work on, on, has done some articles about this. So I think it's getting out slowly but surely. The United Nations Report Repertoire, you know, came out with a report. And I think it's helping as well in terms of declaring it as a form of torture. Uh, and so each of us, I guess, knows 10 or 20 other people that we can share this with. I, I think that the movement is us. And if we take on that responsibility, we can make giant steps.
Good evening. My name is Denise King. And I have a son that's in upstate, the civil liberties union, and the SHU. And how he had gotten there, he got cut in the face, order 17th. And he went to defend himself. And that's how he ended up in the SHU. They gave him six months. I had written a letter asking why did he get such a harsh punishment, punishment for trying to defend himself? So I'm asking someone from this panel, someone to help me get my son out of the SHU. They said he's, I haven't called upstate facilities. This is on the borderline of Canada. I don't even know how to get there. Okay, he was in Kastaki. That's where the incident had taken place. I did write to the deputy commissioner. I wrote to the superintendent. She did write me back. Okay, um, then he went there, uh, last week. So, you know, I just need someone to help me. Thank you.
My office will help you. Cordell Claire is my chief of staff. Please stand up, Cordell. And please make sure you sit here before you leave, okay? We'll, we'll help. The, uh, the folks that, that brought us here to some extent with this outstanding report are here. And we want to take a moment to hear from them before we go back to, to questions and comments. So I want to first start with Mr. Perry. And then he'll introduce actually the person who is the author of the report.
My role is as Legislative Director with NYCLU. I was not directly involved in drafting the report. Scarlett Kim, Taylor Pendergast, whose name was not mentioned, is also here. And they can further elaborate if, if needed upon the findings of the report. Although I think they've already, already been addressed pretty thoroughly. But we can do that if you like. I've been asked for Taylor and Scarlett to stand so people can see who the authors of the report are. Story that is not heard about people who are invisible. And the whole problem with, with legislative advocacy, with, with trying to advance social justice is trying to get that story heard by people who can then begin to shift public policy or, or legislation. And what we've begun to see, as alluded to in the, in the earlier comments, is a narrative beginning to see the light of day. So you have the special repertoire, as mentioned, beginning to document some of the horrendous medieval kind of treatment of folks in prison. The NYCLU report as well documents that phenomenon in New York State prisons. A report is about to be released by Human Rights Watch in the ACLU on juveniles who are put into special, into, into extreme isolation for minor infractions. Each report adds to the story, raises the volume of the story, gives it greater visibility and gives us a greater opportunity to begin to shift the policy debate in New York State. Brian Fisher, the Corrections Commissioner, has all but acknowledged that on the merits, we're right. That the practices are abusive, they're excessive, they're unjustified. They need to be reformed. He has also all but acknowledged that that can only happen unless there's a political context that helps him kind of move the center of political gravity, so to speak, in Albany. That means getting the governor courageous enough and with enough political cover and support to say, this cannot go on.
Can you repeat that, please? I didn't hear you.
And that's the job Bill's doing here, is helping create a dialogue and a political dynamic that gives legislative folks and exec, and the folks in the executive, the guts and the political cover, and you need both, to step up and say, this cannot go on. This is a disgrace. We don't do that in a constitutional democracy. Meaning lock folks up for extreme periods of time in isolation, doing terrible damage to them and to corrections officials and to the general public. That's the story you're telling here tonight and will begin to tell it in Albany. I hope you can come there with us. I think the folks who have authored these reports all ought to come in Albany and tell that story there. And go to the governor's chamber and have his counsel hear this from them. And I think you should be part of that storytelling as well.
I think that, um, Jack and Sarah did a really incredible job, laying out the landscape and also providing some context. But the one thing I wanted to do is mention that, um, even though Taylor and I are attorneys, um, and I think there's often been a lot of focus on legal strategies, the purpose of the report was really to emphasize the human stories of the people that are incarcerated in these conditions and to bring those stories out into the light. And so if you, if you look through the report, I think that's the primary thing that we tried to achieve, to weave kind of a chorus of voices together that, that are so powerful and compelling that they cannot be ignored even though they cannot speak for themselves. Here today, we have an opportunity also to hear from more voices from people who have been directly affected with people who have experienced these conditions firsthand and their loved ones.
My name is Taylor Pendergast. So I'm the co-author of the report with Scarlett about the role of corrections officers in the system. Um, as you'll see in the report, we endeavor to get behind as much as we could. And we were just able to get a peek behind the veil of the thin blue line that separates corrections officers from the rest of the world. Even with the brutality and evilness that we see corrections officers often visiting on people who are incarcerated, it was surprising, I think, to us, but echoes what we've heard from a lot of people who have been incarcerated about COs who are good and COs who are bad, that we, we were able to get some voices from correction, from the correction side who understand how inhumane it is what's happening in SHU and who want to speak out about it. And you will see in our report that we're able to profile just a few of those voices. Um, and we all recognize the tremendous struggle that we have here to change, to shift the culture broadly. And I think that to the extent that we're able to reach even some of the people on the inside who come forward and share some of what they know from the other side and, and confirm what we all know to be true about the brutality and the inhumanity of this practice, that will be one small but important component of the overall struggle.
There was a person who mentioned about what avenues are available for those coming out of prison. First of all, I would say to anyone that has served time in prison upon coming home, one of the first things that you should do is get a mental health evaluation. Um, there was a mother in the back of the room who mentioned about her son being put into solitary confinement. My question is to Ms. Jean Casella. I get telephone calls like that all the time. My question is, does the solitary watch, is it a monitoring, a, a monitoring group that I can use your organization as a, a resource for those who have family members that are consistently being put behind the wall and spending time in solitary confinement?
We're talking about people who are buried as deeply as anyone in our culture is buried. Um, in New York State, there are other resources. There, I don't know if there's anyone from Prison Legal Services here tonight. I don't think so. Um, and, and also Sarah Kerr of the Legal Aid Society could, could respond to that as well.
I'm gonna be honest. Um, it's very hard to, to help people who have been sentenced to the SHU in a timely manner that will reduce their time in solitary confinement. It's, uh, the Prisoner's Legal Services does do individual disciplinary appeal cases. But I don't, I think there are cutoffs a year. Unless somebody's doing at least a 12-month period, they can't take the case. Okay? My office doesn't do them. What I do, can say though, is that I encourage people to tell family members to call and talk to us about how to advocate themselves. I think it's actually much more effective sometimes. Um, you know, my, my role is often about mental health issues. But I try to give people the words, the language, the people to contact within the prisons that will be the most likely to be helpful. That's not much of an offer.
Because like Mr. Akash says, that a lot of people, they end up going to the box just for eyeballing an officer or if you question an officer.
Yeah, one hopes that if that's the charge, it's not a long sentence. But that means then that it's, you're less likely to have the assistance. Uh, it's, it's very complicated. But, you know, I'm not gonna pretend that we're a resource that can solve something. But we can be helpful and informative.
The one group that is equipped to do these kinds of appeals, Prisoner Legal Services of New York, has had its budget cut, cut and cut and cut again under every governor, Democrat, Republican, et cetera. And unless, you know, their support for justice for prisoners in terms of our state budget, what, what you're looking for is, is always gonna be inadequate.
My son was in the SHU for, for 60 days recently. Um, I think one of the things that's missing from the conversation here perhaps, maybe having been at this, is advocacy in this area and advocating in other areas. You're saying that you were sent to, you were sent to the SHU for a reason, which was on a ticket. There's a ticket right here. Uh, the, the corrections officers know how to manipulate the system. Right? So what you're sent to the SHU for isn't necessarily what's on this ticket. And the whole system of appeal is absolutely and utterly freaking useless. Because by the time you, you know, there's two things. What if you actually resist? Retribution can come to you. And if you, and if you actually try to resist, it's futile because, uh, because by the time you had any sort of recourse, um, it's too late. You're already there. You've been there. So I'm gonna propose this as a point, which I think is important. I practiced law for a heck of a long time. And I, I, so I'm offended by this to my very core. We have all kinds of procedures to protect people from being convicted unjustly in the first instance. There is utterly no procedure that works at all for the incremental punishment of being sent to the SHU. Therefore, the state of New York has made the decision because there's no procedure that protects people from being sent to the SHU. And every time they convict somebody, the type of punishment they're going to get is the SHU morally, because there's no way to keep them out of the SHU anyway. So the moral equivalent is, we're sending everybody to solitary confinement. We're, we're putting everybody on the left. We're, we're, we're doing it to every person that goes into the system. That's the moral choices being made by the state of New York and by the legislators and by the governor and by everybody else in this United States that, that tolerates this kind of behavior.
Ninety-five percent of the tickets, uh, the individuals found guilty. Um, that, there's no system that is that good, that that can be accurate. So what it is, is you are right that, um, there's essentially, but this comes back to this element piece that we have that if you are incarcerated, you're not a person, therefore you're not believable. And as long as that's the system, it's very hard. So the remedy that I say exists is that we have to pass legislation that will restrict them so that they can't do that. We have to take major legislation that will put it to such a small set of circumstances that that's how you, that's how you keep them out. Because if you're gonna rely on a due process system that is inherently unfair and is totally biased, it doesn't work.
But if you just reset the circumstances, there's no due process, it's just that everybody will go in for those circumstances. Don't you get it?
No, you can't have, if those circumstances are, are major elements of violence, that is much harder to, to invent than the sort of incidents that has, um, that happens every day in the SHU. Because what we do, we ask people, are, is there retaliation? Are people set up? And it happens all the time. I'm not disagreeing with the problem. I think the solution is to severely restrict under what circumstances you can go in.
Notwithstanding the senator here is quite effective. The, the New York State Legislature is a notoriously ineffective body. Um, and so I'm just curious, like, if we're gonna rely on that, we may be, it may be a long time coming. And so I'm, I'm curious about other, other possible strategies.
Her governor has a big stick. Do you understand? And we have to make sure that this is put on his priority list. And that's why we're here today. Hopefully, we've had an opportunity to look at the petition that we're circulating and will bother to sign a name, calling on the governor to take some leadership to address this problem in the right way.
A program put in place for the person that are convicted unjust? I, I would like to know those programs you're talking about because, um, not in 2009, my son was walking the street. My son never did anything wrong in his life. He would walk the street and he had in his pocket, uh, what'd you call this thing? Brass knuckle? And two cops stopped him and told him that there was a, um, that was some kind of felon because he was carrying it. He said he didn't know that was what it was because he always carried that because he had that from a kid. And the cops, you know, beat him up real bad. And I went to court with him and the judge and them told him if he didn't plead guilty, they would incarcerate him. And I went, uh, trying to get help for him not to go to jail. So I begged him to plead guilty, but we're still fighting it. So I would like to know what kind of program put in place for kids who will be wrongly convicted of things that, you know, no violence could, you know, connected to the situation? Because I don't think that was a felon. Or I don't think he did anything wrong. He was just walking the street with his friend. And he had this stuff in his pocket. And he told it before he swam, before he stopped him. After you search him, I have a brass knuckle in my pocket. And the police just manhandled him and he put his foot in his neck. Stepped on his neck. And, um, I don't think that was right. And I'm still fighting to keep him from going to jail. You know, I don't want him to go to jail to go to this. I am a human being. I am formerly incarcerated. When I was a child, I assumed that when my mother held me in her arms, people didn't look at her and say, gee, Lydia, what a great-looking little convict you have right there. Or what a great-looking inmate you have there. Or what a great-looking dolphin you have there. I'm hoping that they were saying, one, that I was great-looking, but then I, that they identified me as a human being. And I say this to say that if we use the language and the frame and the narrative of the oppressor, while we're trying to advocate for essentially human beings and we talk about dignity and humanity, and we're using the language of the oppressor, then we're going into the fight losing. We need to change the language. I am first and foremost a human being. People in the SHU are human beings. They're not prisoners. They're not inmates. They're not ex-convicts. We are human beings. And it's much more easier. There's not just a moral issue. When you study something and you, you define it as something, you look at it in a certain perspective and you lose another perspective. And if you define people as inmates or prisoners while you're doing a study of them, that also affects how you look at them in a very subconscious or at least pre-conscious way. So my, my soapbox and, as you know, my colleagues are now looking at me. Not again, Eddie. Uh, and they're very good about this. I'm kidding. But, I mean, if, we need to change the frame. We need to change narrative. You know, and I'm really extorting advocates, people on the street, people who do studies, politicians, to call us by our names. We are human beings.
Yeah, and a number of people have made it clear that there is a culture of brutality among some of the guards. Um, I've recently heard a story that within at least one or two of the prisons, that's intensified as a result of the threat to close prisons so that they're so uptight right now. But on top of that, um, it seems to me, and, and the gentleman before alluded to this, that we have a culture of anti-prisoners, um, that is part of the popular culture. So if you look at all the TV programs, and I watch some of them because they're fun to watch. But I think people are very much influenced by a lot of those programs and the attitudes they have towards people who've made mistakes, who've committed crimes, are so, are themselves so brutal and so negative that it seems to me it's not enough just to have, um, a documentary which, uh, talks about solitary confinement, which will be watched by maybe a few people. But we need to find an avenue into that popular culture that, so that you change things on a broader scale. And I don't know how to do that, but maybe somebody else here does.
More and more of us are being influenced, not just in terms of, of how we dress or how, the language we use, which is very important. And I'm glad you raised that concern about language. Uh, but we do need to get this to become more of a popular movement as opposed to sort of the New York Times. We need to get it into all about public papers and avenues of discourse, including in that popularity, our religious institutions, our churches, our synagogues, our mosques, so on and so forth. Somebody said amen.
I have to give a plug to Herman's House. I think it's a wonderful film. If you get a chance to see it, it really is fundamentally about doing a human being who's in one of these terrible situations. I 100% agree with you. I think our fundamental battle is to have people who are incarcerated seen as persons. I think, uh, I think a corollary of that, once you see them as persons, you see the possibility of change. And when you see the possibility of change, the whole paradigm shifts. Because then you're saying, "Why am I not treating them? Why am I not trying to address their concerns rather than just suppress them and treat them like something even less than animals?" And so, I think we have to do that, and we have to do it every way we can. But it's the humanity that we have to be emphasizing. And I think film and ways that go beyond the intellectual argument to the emotional argument is very important.
I just wanted to say that it is important, so if you do have someone that's in solitary confinement, like my husband was, that the family support to be there for the person who's very, I used to call his counselor all the time. Well, the whole time that he did the time in the box, I feel the relationship with his counselor. So, I feel like it is important for them to know that they do have family.
I think a crucial part of that is that, you know, just this past year, they cut out the free bus service. We all have to be lobbying to get that bus service back because that's how you keep families together.
Repeat after me. Bring back the bus!
Bring back the bus!
Are you serious? Bring back the bus!
Bring back the bus!
All right. So, that's on the record. You know, this is from, from UPA, how we're saying, "Bring back the bus," right?
All right. There is a positive program on TV One. It's called Parole Diaries. And in Parole Diaries, it documents the struggles of men and women coming home from being incarcerated. And it also talks about the struggles of the parole officers in trying to provide them with the outreach and the resources that are needed. In many years of television, we have not seen a positive program. Someone mentioned about the negativity that's part of our culture. It's very important that we refer to, though, our brothers and sisters as formerly incarcerated individuals as opposed to inmates and convicts because the language is very important. If you guys get a chance, it's on Wednesday night on TV One at IPI. Thank you.
What we're going to do is going to ask the panelists to sort of give us a closing remark.
There are many groups out there that are interested in working on this, Urban Justice Center, many others. I don't want to do the whole list. You see all that support. But we're trying to really get together and come up with a strategic plan on how to address that. That is going to be multi-dimensional. It has to be both political, it has to be legal, it has to be community-based, and also has to be advocates, not just the incarcerated population, but that go broader than that. And so, if you would like to get involved, please contact, and there is a, there's a contact piece at the end of the flyer that we had, that people could contact to try to get involved. This is a time to get involved. And there are far too little time to go to what the specific solutions are, but rather, the most important, the most important solution is first, get involved.
About some of the success that's happened. Mahask is now doing training, planning to do training through the Family Committee with correction officers. They're going to be led into the Training Academy. They're working on setting that up. They're using families, mostly family members. I don't think that, I'm not sure that, previously incarcerated? Which is wonderful. We have dialogues now with, through Mahask with all of the agencies. CQC, who's doing the monitoring now, Docs, and with OMH. I mean, there are real opportunities to think about change. And I also want people to think about, you know, we try to use everybody's talents who come and join us. So, you know, my talents end up being kind of litigious and writing and drafting, and kind of boring. Been doing this a little too long, maybe. Other people can be much more creative, and communicating with the agencies is so important. And it is vital that we think about how to make it easier for families to visit. The free bus is one thing. I'm sorry, there's video hookups. If it's too hard to travel, why aren't we letting people visit with their family members through Skype? Why aren't we using new technology within the prisons? Why aren't, you know, we put people away for three years for having a cell phone? That's because they're so desperate to get a phone call and have that contact that should be so important for reducing recidivism and keeping family ties. So, we've got to start changing the conversation and stop having it be so punitive and so separate and so different and so closed that what we all walk around with now, or I'm texting the person I'm meeting after this meeting now, you know, we have so much available now, and we can change things so easily now and with so little expense. And that needs to be part of the conversation. And I want the people here to think about, you know, what would have helped them and what would help them with those contacts, to bring those ideas forward and make them part of the conversation.
Just in closing, I would like to thank the individuals that have advocated so successfully. I know that the fight is not over. However, we've made huge strides. But I wanted to move and just say something real quick about Jack. Jack is the Jails Action Coalition, and although we've made great strides of fighting against the New York State Department of Corrections, none of those, none of those strides and none of those victories are really being reflected in New York City's jail system. So, right here in Rikers Island, they're perpetrating the same things that they was doing back in the days Upstate. And we have a coalition called Jack, the Jails Action Coalition. You could visit our Facebook. We're actually utilizing technology to try to get the word out there, social networking. And we have a web page that's in the development. And there's some information on the table. I appreciate it if y'all grab it up before y'all leave. And at the minimum, if, you know, because sometimes it seems hard to fight, but the fight has to start somewhere. And maybe just starting even before these individuals go to the prison system, just starting when they first, because they're detainees. They're not even charged yet. They're not even charged. These guys could be innocent. And he could be in solitary confinement, beat his case, and come right back into our communities. And we don't know what sort of damage that's doing. But now, it's even better. Thank you for the report, by the way. There's more and more evidences coming out, and that's what we needed. Before, it was just feelings and people saying stuff. Now, we have statistics, numbers, and that's making the difference. Okay? Thank you.